Five o'clock, we'll call a special meeting of the Commerce City City Council to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Hughesman?
Present.
Mayor Protem Frank? Councilmember Madera? Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Noble?
Present.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Present.
Councilmember Hurst?
Present.
Councilmember Grimes?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, everyone is present this evening, so no need to excuse anyone. Purpose for this special meeting is for me to explain or the city manager? So, in the effort to minimize contact, we are having a special meeting this evening. One of the items on the, that we'll need to do is cancel Monday evening's meeting in order to just proceed with this meeting as a ways of getting our business done that needs to get done. We are trying to minimize the public coming in and gathering in large space and potentially spreading any contamination should there be from one person to another. So, that's the purpose. There is no general citizen communication due to the fact that this is a special meeting. However, written comments will be accepted if there's anything that a member wishes to address before the council. Would encourage everybody to view the council meetings online or Channel 8 to avoid exposing yourself or others to COVID-19. Next up on the agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are three items listed under the consent agenda. Normally, public comment on the consent agenda is not permitted, but with the absence of citizen communication period, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the consent agenda items? Seeing no members from the public here, we'll move forward. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing no items to be removed off, I will need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Councilman Madera? Mayor Protem Frank?
Second up, motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the city attorney please read the titles?
Resolution 2020-11, resolution authorizing a word of contract for design of Brighton Road between East 100 and 4th Avenue and East 112th Avenue, Project Hewitt Solars, Inc. Resolution 2020-20, resolution approving maintenance contract for Beeching Beacon Communications. Resolution 2020-28, resolution approving selection of baseline corporation to provide additional professional planning and development technical support services.
We have a second and a motion. The city attorney has read the titles. We'll take a roll call vote. Consent agenda passes unanimously by council, is seated. Next on the item is administrative business. Will city manager McBroom and chief Nichols please provide an update on the COVID situation?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It's very unusual to call a special meeting of the city council. I'm grateful that you all were able to attend. We have some actions for you to consider tonight related to the city's response to the virus. Before getting into those actions, it seemed to make sense to provide you a high-level update on where we are as city government. Our grand plan yesterday was to have a more formal presentation for you. As you could imagine, things are not happening normally. So, the chief and I are gonna kind of walk through a high-level verbal update with you. We are working to establish a protocol to take information that's generated from our EOC daily activity to turn into a daily report for city council. We don't have that formulated yet, so bear with us as we walk through some high-level updates. Before I turn it over to the chief, I do think city staff has responded very well to the crisis. As you know, we were one of the first communities to close our facilities to the public. As you also likely know, the key to stopping the spread of the virus is limiting public interactions. For some in the community, it might have seemed as if it was an overreaction to take that step yesterday. I still believe it was the right thing to do. It has had impacts on city operations. An important clarification, though, although we closed our facilities to the public, we are still endeavoring to provide as many city services as we can. All city employees, unless they were program instructors at our rec centers, did show up for work yesterday and today. We have protocols in place to pay folks if they're not able to be here at work or if we don't need them here at work. Our full focus and attention is on doing our part to limit the spread of the virus. The city staff, I think, has done an outstanding job. We do have an emergency operations plan. An annex to that plan or an addendum to that plan was created specifically to respond to this crisis. Kirk Dominic is the city's emergency manager. He's an outstanding manager. In fact, the plan that he developed has been used by a number of other jurisdictions around us. I'm told the city of Westminster, city and county of Broomfield, federal heights, Adams County Sheriff's Office, there may be more by now, have taken our plan and adapted it for their purposes. So, it's an excellent plan. It did not survive contact with reality. It's been amended almost daily to address current situations, but it's a very good plan and it's helped focus our operations. We did activate the city's emergency operations center yesterday morning. Given the nature of the situation, it's only being operated from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so it has closed for the day today. Certainly, the people that are leads in our response were all available 24/7, but given the prolonged nature of the situation, we want to be mindful to not have folks here at city hall if they don't absolutely have to be. So, those are some introductory remarks from my perspective. I'll ask the chief to share again his update on where we are. Incidentally, we did just have a situational update in the EOC at four o'clock. So, it's the folks in the EOC, department directors, other key staff. So, those are happening three times a day currently.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I am extremely pleased to work with the folks that I've been practically living with the last three days. We've put in a lot of work to make sure that our plan was flexible and adaptable enough and that it was designed with one goal in mind, to limit the exposure of Commerce City residents to this pandemic influenza. On that note, we actually started preparation for this, actually, I say "we", our emergency manager started preparation for this probably, I believe, in February, when the first virus started to become active in China. He realized that there was a possibility that this thing could spread relatively quickly, and he started working on a plan. If I could show to you the amount of resources that he read in a month, his desk was filled with coronavirus and all sorts of deadly diseases in order to enact the best plan that he could. And I can tell you, the one that he provided to the city in early March was very comprehensive and took into account all of the things that needed to be taken into account to limit the exposure of residents and citizens to this disease. And so, on that note, his plan had five levels. The five levels were designed based on level five, preparedness phase, and all of these phases have different situational triggers which forces us to move to the next phase. It also had some requirements on what each department needed to do in order to come into compliance with those different phases. And so, level five was a preparedness phase, and that was simply there were no people in the USA that were currently inflicted. And then, we wanted to, at least five foreign countries had people that were in quarantine or infected as a result. And at that point, there was just an education piece for department members to be made aware that this thing is happening somewhere else. We probably need to keep an eye on it. At level four, the initiation of the infectious prevention measures. Some of the situational triggers, when between 1 to 20 people in the Denver metro region got quarantined or infected, the governor declares a state of emergency. We would be operating in stage four, which again, were those immediate area, clean your areas, wash your hands, take some preventative steps. Level three is where this really came into play. That's the communicable disease has a minor to moderate impact to the city. Some of the triggers for that were between when 21 to 100 people in the Denver metro region were quarantined or tested positive. And that occurred on Wednesday night. So, by Thursday morning and meeting with the city manager and consultation with the plan, we decided to move the city to level three. And what that meant is that the World Health Organization declared a global pandemic, and we were anticipating between 1 to 15% of Commerce City employees would be absent from work for a variety of reasons. And at that point, that triggered some department responses on, we wanted to take a look at essential versus non-essential functions and to prioritize our different work areas. So, for example, deciding who needed to be at work and who did not. Who could work remotely, who could not. And then, we also wanted to balance that alongside community expectations of, if we were going to severely draw back resources, what would that look like and what could community members expect? Level two, which is the communicable disease has a moderate to major impact to the city, and in consultation with everything that's taking place within Colorado and the state, I anticipate that we will be there by Monday morning. That requires over 100 people in the Denver metro area to be infected or have presumptive positive tests. Prior to walking in here, PDHE said that there were 72. There are some unofficial reports that put that number at about 112, but our official source is PDHE, and they're going to update theirs at five o'clock, and I haven't had a chance to look at it lately. So, we will be at about a level two response on Monday, if not sooner. And that was also triggered by both 27J canceling school effective yesterday, was their last day, and Adams 14 is planning on canceling school on the 14th, next Monday. So, we're anticipating an increase in people in the community. No real place to go along with these increased positive tests that will be in level two. And that's where city manager sort of told us that on Monday morning again, we'll brief every department director, we'll have had to identify non-essential, essential personnel. We'll initiate some work remotely when possible. And at that point, we're anticipating because of the school closures, and it's already starting to happen, employees will not be able to respond to work because they have other priorities, either presumptive testing, they potentially have been exposed, and/or they've got to care for family members, if not self-care. So, we have plans to enact that. And then, level one, that's when I go home. I'm tired, sorry. Level one, the communicable disease has a major, it's a significant impact in the community, and that's when we're starting to see Commerce City residents being infected, and we will start to see some local quarantines here locally. So, what I can tell you is in talking with the department directors and our leadership team here at the city, we have been extremely diligent in preparing for this. While most plans, again, as the city manager mentioned, plans are great until reality hits them. I think our plan is flexible enough that will allow us to still conduct essential city services that will have very limited impact to our residents. And I think we are in a very, very good place. We were fortunate to have jumped on this before it got bad. Our plan has been solid so far. Our team members are working together well. And I think we've got a fairly solid plan that'll withstand the pandemic influenza virus that we probably are going to see over the next week or so. So, having said that, are there any questions of me?
Any questions from council? Mr. Hurst?
Yep?
I just want to comment. Great job. Thanks for the update. Thanks for the hard work because there's a lot going on right now at every level of government that makes this even more confusing. So, I appreciate the clear and, you know, precise update because that's what we need to get back to our community is just what's going on here. We don't, we see all over the news what's going on nationwide. We see what's going on at the state, constantly motivated by that. I appreciate that very clear update of what we're doing here locally because that, I think, is what matters the most.
If I could also add, we were working on a, when the EOC closes at the end of the day, there'll be a status summary that comes out that'll be distributed to you so you can see where we are priority-wise, what's working, what's not working. So, you'll have a better idea of what the day-to-day functions will look like. We tried to finish that up today, but as you can imagine, we've had lots of other things we've had to deal with, but I commit that that will be done by Monday.
And that situational report is more of a technical document amongst other things. It makes, we're collecting the right information to be eligible for reimbursement, presumably federal aid. Our intent is to pull key information out of that situational report to share with you and share with the community. There's a lot of operational details in there that wouldn't be of interest to you.
Any other comments or questions from council? I'd like to say thank you to everybody involved. I think you guys have done a phenomenal job in preparing for this and enacting your plan. Your comments regarding, the plan gets changed daily. That's to be expected. Every good battle plan is great until you have contact with the enemy, and then, everything changes from there, right? I think, though, that overall, this is a good dress rehearsal. This is a good dress rehearsal for the city on how we respond to a major event like this. This one likely is not going to pan out to the highest degree of disaster that some people have predicted. But I think this really shows us areas that we can tighten up and we can make some changes and things that we can do a little bit better, at the same time showing us the things that worked very well. So, I think this is a great dress rehearsal in that regard, and I really commend everything you guys have done. On that, I think it's also a good dress rehearsal for the residents out there. You know, I think a lot of residents are finding themselves that they were not prepared for a situation like this. You know, if you look at the store shelves right now, the bare toilet paper, the bare water, you know, emergency supplies that have not been stocked up on. You know, after Katrina, there was a big push to make sure everybody was prepared, and there was a lot of federal guidance and, you know, recommendations of what needs to be done. And here we are 15 years later, and it seems like that was forgotten. So, now, as you go to every store out there looking for those essential supplies, they're not there. So, I highly recommend that our residents out there also consider the response that they've taken to this and what they can do better in order to prepare themselves moving forward for the next disaster that may end up coming our way. Overall, though, thank you very much. I think you guys have done a phenomenal job. I appreciate the leadership and everybody involved, the decision to shut down the facilities. You know, yes, you guys were the first ones to make that decision. It was the right decision. I fully support what you've done. I just think that you guys have really led our city in the proper manner and appreciate everything that's gone into this. Next up is going to be council meeting schedules. City manager McBroom will lead this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. The next two items are certainly related. On the one hand, I'm recommending changes to the city council's meeting schedule. The second item allows us to conduct critical meetings remotely if necessary. So, the first item, city council meeting schedule. In light of the decision to close city facilities to the public, as the chief mentioned, we fully expect to be at level two in our plan implementation by Monday at the latest. Among other things, that will mean scaling back city operations for a number of reasons. So, we are going through the process now of prioritizing essential services so that when we reach level two, we can start making adjustments and communicating those adjustments out to the community. Related to that, and given that we'll be scaling back city operations, I think the most prudent thing for the city council to do is cancel all city council meetings and board and commission meetings through March 31st. Should there be a need for council to take a critical action, the special meeting provisions we'll be talking about next will enable us to do that in a safe way. I could tell you that at this point in time, if we reduce city operations to essential functions, the most critical piece of that, the most critical role in that for city council would likely be some sort of budget action. Appropriating money, re-appropriating money, allowing us to move money from one fund to another would be one action that only city council can take. We don't foresee that being necessary, but if that is necessary, that would require a special meeting, and the emergency ordinance we'll talk about next would enable you to do that without having to physically be in the same room. Again, we don't know if it will come to that. It seems the right thing to do is to plan for that. So, my recommendation would be to cancel city council meetings through the end of the month. The other advantage to doing that, the other reason that makes sense, for the last three days, a number of us have only worked on the virus. There's, there has been, has not been much time to do other work. Although we've tried to offer and continue to provide daily city services, things that require city council action on your normal Monday night agendas take a great deal of staff work. And the staff that would normally be doing that work is doing other things right now. But again, we will, with the emergency ordinance, should council adopt it, we'll be in a position to take critical actions if necessary. It also helps us address with some of the open meetings law confinement that we still have to operate under. So, that would be my recommendation. It will then push off normal city council business to April, May. So, part of winding down this operational plan, we will need to create a recovery plan to get operations back to normal, catch up on work, including city council business. So, we're, we are understanding that we will need to do that. That may have some impacts on all of us, including you later this spring. There may be a need for extra meetings or longer meetings. But at this time, again, I believe the best course of action would be to cancel the next, so in our case, it'd be the next three meetings, would be the 16th, the 23rd, and the joint meeting with Adams 14 on the 30th.
Any input from the council on how to move forward? Councilman Wadiola?
So, we would, April 6th would be our next regular meeting.
Correct. And it is possible there would be a special meeting between now and then should you cancel the other meetings, but the next regular city council meeting at this time would be April 6th.
Councilwoman Grimes?
And that assumes flexibility. If things change, we can cancel further meetings if necessary?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Councilwoman Noble?
Would this also slide time schedules and deadlines on certain things that have been pending before us or before the city, such as regulations, et cetera?
Yes, we would have to reevaluate appropriate timelines for actions that are in the works, certainly with respect to city council actions.
What about, there's currently a response period, a public comment, written public comment period, on our draft regulations on oil and gas that was just issued Wednesday or Thursday, I think? 21-day public comment period. It seems to be expecting a lot of our residents to address that while they're also having first concerns about their own families, their work, health, et cetera.
I would suggest giving staff an opportunity to evaluate that. Would council object, given the circumstances, if we extended some of those deadlines? There'd be any, I don't think that public comment period was approved by city council. I think we shared it with you, and council was generally supportive. So, if we extended those deadlines, I'm not seeing anybody.
But we didn't vote on whether the deadlines on those, we didn't vote on those deadlines.
Understood.
It's a 30-day period.
Thank you. Nevertheless, I still think that it would be good. Just if we're sliding the meetings, just slide all of those deadlines as well, in fairness.
Certainly, it's going to take longer to bring an action on those regulations back to council anyway, so there's little impact to extending that public comment deadline.
Would you like to make a motion, councilwoman? Would you like to make a motion?
Mayor, I don't think council action is necessary as long as there's no objection to staff administratively extending those deadlines.
Councilman Wadiola?
I was just gonna say also, on any other deadlines, I think we should just extend it. I mean, it's only fair, you know, the letter we got today from the home builders, right, permits, how do we extend stuff like that? Because they're on a time schedule too. And if we're gonna be fair for everybody, you know, I just think people are not gonna leave their house. I mean, we're being advised to stay home. So, if we're gonna extend the deadline, and maybe it's more work, and I do apologize for that, but if we should just be flexible with our residents, our partners, our business partners, to extend all those deadlines, if we have any hard deadlines, because what if an employee can't come out? So, that's all I was gonna say, mayor, is that if we're gonna extend deadlines, I think it should be for everything. That way, we're fair and it's reasonable.
Just by way of background, we're looking at a whole host of those things. Tax payment, filing deadlines, any other requirements that we've imposed on folks that do business with the city, code enforcement cases, we're evaluating all of it. You're absolutely right. All of those things are impacted.
And we have quarterly interviews for April 4th. Would we push those back a week since we would start on April 6th, or would we still continue those?
Whatever your desires are, I can reschedule with everybody that's confirmed so far. We've got about nine people right now, so I'm happy to make calls and shoot emails out.
Thank you.
At this time, my suggestion again is cancel all city council and board and commission meetings just through the end of the month with the idea that we'll, I'm sure, evaluate before we get to the end of the month. But those interviews on the 4th are completely at the discretion of the committee.
Mayor Protem Frank?
I would make a motion to cancel all council meetings and board and commission meetings through March 31st unless a special meeting is called pursuant to the charter. And then, also extend any deadlines as needed, you know, per councilwoman Noble and the other requests that have been made.
Councilmember Madera? I have a motion and a second to cancel all council meetings, board and commission meetings until the, through the 31st of March. Extend any and all deadlines. Mr. Sheasley?
As far as extending deadlines related to things under the code or administrative processes, I don't know that we can fully evaluate that, so take that as a look at things you can extend option. Okay. Just want to make everybody's expectations clear.
So, a motion and a second to cancel all council meetings, board and commission meetings. Look at extending any and all deadlines beyond the scope through the 31st of March. Go for, Councilwoman Grimes, you want anything?
Just a question. Could that include deadlines that staff is currently under as well?
I mean, I was meaning it for any and all, all deadlines that can be extended to extend them all.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that we're also looking at, I know we're expecting a presentation from Brian at the end of the month, and I want to make sure that was included in that as well.
Yeah, I think at this point, the focus needs to be on what staff needs to do with this, you know, with this COVID, and so I would say absolutely extend all of it.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So, like I said, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Take a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we will talk about remote participation policies. Will city attorney please lead the discussion?
Thank you, mayor. This afternoon, I distributed a draft emergency ordinance establishing electronic and emergency meeting procedures and authorizing remote conduct during certain declared disasters and emergencies. Emergency ordinances require approval of seven members, and they'd be effective immediately. I strongly encourage the council to adopt this. Obviously, I want to walk through this ordinance. I've heard questions from council members, so I want to hit the high points and then answer any questions. The council needs this in order to operate and prevent people from needing to come into contact with each other unnecessarily and to protect staff. And to the extent the situation gets worse and prevents people from traveling to make sure that the representative part of this government can continue to operate if it's needed to do so. And secondarily, to preserve public participation, even if people are stuck at home, and to not make it seem that the intent of the city is to keep the public out. It's quite the opposite. It's to keep going and to make that available. So, I strongly encourage council to adopt this ordinance. Premise behind this is that the open meetings law requires public meetings to be open to the public, and our charter requires meetings to be open to the public and to allow a reasonable opportunity to be heard. This ordinance does that through technological means. Caveat is, our IT department is trying to stand up options to do this. We don't know that it exists yet, or if it exists for our purposes and that we can run it. So, that's an ongoing issue. This is meant to be flexible and not to be overly definitive. But to maintain those options, if the city manager or the mayor in certain circumstances has provided in the charter, determines we don't have the capacity to do it, then we're gonna have to have to figure out another way to go forward. And so just briefly going through, the meat of this is in section two, that identifies that when we have a disaster like this one, or if the physical location's not appropriate, council member and the, the chief executive, which in certain circumstances is the mayor, but primarily is the city manager, can schedule a city council meeting if it gets called. So if you call a special meeting in the next couple of weeks and we have this capacity, we would use this system potentially. It allows council members to attend and participate in the council meeting, whether they're at home, another location, or they potentially could come here. That means they can vote and participate and discuss. It defines electronic means to be telephone, video, or some form of web-based conferencing. I know our IT department is looking at Zoom as an option right now, which has been a great platform we've been using the last couple of days here for emergency operations. This sets a minimum floor for what that electronic means is, to make sure that both, that council members are understanding and can participate, and that the public can participate and view it. But the most important thing is that the public can view this and be able to submit at a minimum in writing. So the requirements are that council members and staff can see and, or can see if it's possible, or at least hear and communicate with each other and with the staff. The public can hear it and view it if we're doing it through a visible means and they have the technology. The meeting, any public statements, the staff, other members of the public are making or were making, as the council's making, that the public can hear your votes, who's making the vote, and what the outcome of the vote is, and then any materials presented, which likely would be presented on the website separately. And then also allows for, at a minimum, written public comment, to the extent that there are some members of our community that could get something in in writing, but maybe they could connect by phone and at best through their computers, so that we could hear that in the, hear that, hear that here or wherever we're meeting, and that the public could also hear that, subject to your standard policies, the three-minute rule, the citizen communication portion on action items, subject to the same rules about disorderly conduct. If, if for some reason the technology we have allows a person to disrupt the meeting, we need to be able to disconnect that person. Zoom generally allows for the control of that. So that's, that's positive, but we don't know the, the technological capacity at this point. There is a provision in there that I, I think may cause concern for some people, that written public comment, if somebody writes it, is just entered into the record and not read. I drafted that to intend the meeting to go faster to the, because we're likely meeting under an emergency scenario, and then allowing the mayor, as the chair of the meeting, the ability to disallow comment on agenda items and, or confine, if in extreme circumstance, confining comment to a portion of the meeting. So if you want to talk about anything, we're gonna do it in one lump group, or make the choice to read comments. I received some feedback that that was not desirable. So treating this kind of like a study session before council may consider this, would there be an objection to me deleting that provision from this ordinance? Or is anybody insistent that that flexibility stay in there? I, I would recommend deleting it at this point.
Delete it.
Okay, so I will delete that. And then so, written public comment is entered into the, into the record and not read, I'll say unless council votes to do so, if that works. So there's that option there, but then we won't get bogged down.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't clear on this part for Mr. Sheasley. May I ask that he repeat it?
Yeah.
Yes, I, so I was going to, I've already deleted, so I have to pull up my paper copy. For written public comment, I've deleted the portion that allows the mayor to disallow public comment on certain items, limiting it to one portion of the meeting, or alternatively allowing him to choose to whether to read comments or not. But I have preserved that written comments are just entered into the record and not read aloud, unless the, and I've added, unless the council votes to do so. I think, and the, the reason behind that would be preserving the time of the meeting potentially. Council still gets that information from their constituents. We also don't know what people are going to write, to the extent that it is offensive or amoffal, or in some way would violate our policies. I think it makes it difficult to ask someone in the room to read that comment. I would not personally feel comfortable reading citizen comments that may include that sort of thing. But the option is there for council to choose to put some comment on the audio or video. So I think I've, I've tried to preserve that if that works.
My only concern is limiting citizen involvement. That's why we're here. We're here for them, and that just, that just concerns me.
Yes, it does preserve the ability for them to give you comments, and hopefully people will be communicating with you all separately as well during the course of this. So the comment is there, it is there for you to be able to read and digest and respond to. So the citizen involvement is, is absolutely preserved. It may just not be read orally.
One of us could read it if we chose to, however.
Correct, if the council chose to do so, yes.
Or if a council member chose to do so.
Is that the desire of council, to allow one council member? I've put it at the, the election of, of the council as a body. I'd be happy to, to change it if, if that's the desire, council, if, if one council member chooses to like removing something from the consent agenda.
Councilman Hurst? All right, now, councilwoman Madera? Councilman Wadiola?
And, and I think another point on that, and they could be in the minutes, word for word, as how they submitted it, so, and we could always go back and rediscuss the minutes and approve them. So I think in an emergency situation, they're in the record, they're gonna be in the minutes, word for word, for whoever said it.
Councilwoman Noble, do you want to continue with your point?
Well, I, I remain concerned, we are accountable, and residents have to have some way of informing the entire community that this is being attended to or not being attended to. And having a vote on every written comment doesn't seem to make sense. I would certainly think that each of us is responsible. We are adults and can figure out when something should be read and when not. And if someone, if I don't choose to read it, but someone else does, I'm not going to stop them from doing it. I think we should give ourselves that latitude. We are, we have all been elected to perform a duty, and we can figure this out on our own.
So Mr. Sheasley, the way I see this now, it says, written public comments shall be entered into the record and not read.
Correct. That's how, that's how it was drafted. I was trying to give an option for someone to.
And councilwoman Noble, you want every public comment to be read during that meeting?
I believe she's asked that one council member could choose to read it if, if there's a particular comment that wants to be read. Perhaps a compromise would be if several councilmembers.
Councilman Hurst?
The only, the only reason I disagree with that is because if we read one person's, we should then read them all. I feel like we'll get some negative response if we don't. And so I think if we keep them all in writing, we keep it fair to everybody, I, I don't, I think this is only on emergency topics. Obviously, we're not doing land use cases or anything like that. We, we are still gonna accept feedback, but we shouldn't do one for one comment and not for the other. That'd be my only position against that.
Mayor Proton?
I would agree with Craig on that. And, and the other part is like councilwoman Guardiola said, if, if it comes back in the meetings when we approve the, the meeting minutes at that time, if a comment needs to be made. But the point of these meetings is an emergency basis, and I feel like if we're also, you know, live streaming or whatever, I mean, the intent is to get through these meetings quickly. So I would prefer to keep them read at that time. I mean, these meetings are gonna be held just for business that has to be completed.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Ms. Noble, are you, are you kind of, kind of thinking like if something earth-shattering comes through as a question? Because I, I hear both sides of what, what we're talking about here. I, I agree with you, there are probably some questions that would come in that would warrant answering. I also hear what councilman Hurst is saying, there's probably gonna be a lot of duplicative comments, and there's no need to read all of those, right? So is there a compromise where we can, like you suggested, use, use our discretion to answer something that warrants answering in the moment?
I would think that if a council member were trying to make a point during discussion on an item, and they could reference written communication that comes in. And so the relief valve already exists to allow comments to be read out loud if it is part of a, one individual's comments. Another council member may choose an opposing point of view and choose to read those comments in rebuttal during the discussion period. So I think that it doesn't need to be explicit to say it will not be read. I think that having it that any public comments could be entered into the record as or, and used by a council member during their discussion portion of an agenda item. Does that work for everybody?
May I just also note, to help with the great points, during our meetings, we don't respond to citizen communication, but we use the administrative council business portion. So if there is a written comment that deserves a response, that would be the appropriate time to read that comment, potentially to raise that. So a council member, I think, would have the flexibility to bring that up later. I think, I think that's there, to, to not silence the voice. That's not the intent in any way.
Bring it up later, or again, reference that comment while in the discussion period of an agenda item. So can you make those changes to that, please, so that we can?
Yes, I've changed that to say that written public comment shall be entered into the record, but may be relied upon by any council member.
Everybody good with that amendment? Thank you, continuing.
Then moving as quickly as possible for me to, that we're physically restricting access, largely the point of this is to prevent the need to have people here. However, we are preserving the open meetings law to make sure there are not side conversations, just as in any other meeting, so that the public sees what is happening. All votes by roll call, because when you're doing it by audio, it's, it's hard to, no voice votes. Everything will be recorded, minutes will be taken and prepared promptly. We allow a quorum through this type of meeting. We will try to be able to do executive sessions and study sessions through this. If for some reason the ability to participate is disrupted, council could elect to proceed if there is a quorum present. I think the council needs to retain that flexibility. Do restrict this on quasi judicial matters. We're not gonna do public hearings or take any votes during, during an electronic meeting or an emergency meeting, which we'll get to in a second, unless we come back and figure out a way to do that. I just want to preserve that option out there, so we know some limited things that can be on the agenda. And then authorizing boards and commissions, if we have the capacity to do this, allowing boards and conditions to continue to meet. Hopefully, we don't get down that road, and we're not doing this three months out. Are there any other questions? That's generally the concept for if we can stand this up, your next meeting may happen through this procedure. And otherwise, it would follow the agenda of a normal meeting. We can do any business but a public hearing, essentially, is the intent.
Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, I have a question about section three.
Yes, I was going, yes.
You haven't gotten there yet?
No, I was just gonna finish up section two and then happy to.
All right. I'll hang on then.
Okay, maybe I'll answer it. That'd be unlikely. So section three is intended, because I could throw this in there, we don't have this yet, if we get back to regular meetings, I'm gonna be positive, when we get back to regular meetings, if for some reason the council can meet here, but another member is sick, traveling, has to care for a child, a lot of communities are starting to adopt these policies, this is to allow a member not to abuse it or to have it be the regular participation, but if council consents, to let that person participate in a discussion, an executive session, a study session, or a discussion here, but not a public hearing on a quasi judicial matter, and not be able to vote on anything, because the requirements of open meetings of due process are, become constrained at that point, you have a person out there. So I think you need a little more rigor around that. That person also doesn't count towards the quorum. We can refine this later, but I, I thought I'd throw this in here now. For item D, limiting person's ability to vote, but they can participate in discussions and ask questions, but they can't participate in the public hearing. And then the person who's chairing the meeting needs to be physically present. So I don't think I answered your question, though, about item D of that.
In the previous section, electronic meetings, there are votes allowed, from what I can see.
Yes.
Even, even if the council members are not present, I'm not understanding why, in this case, an individual who can't be present is suddenly unable to vote.
Correct. It is not an intention to put something in here to allow general remote participation. It's sort of an extraordinary circumstance for somebody, and to preserve the fact that the rest of the council is getting a different perspective. Somebody who's at home or elsewhere is not going to be getting the perspective of the audience in the chambers, or the presentations from staff, or even the benefit of being around their other council members. In section two, everybody is participating remotely and from a different location, and so everybody's making their decisions on the same basis. So it's intended to preserve, and also intended to make sure that people come to council meetings. And so I very rarely see policies out there allowing people to vote remotely. And in fact, they're often more strict that they can't do executive sessions remotely. You also get concerns about the identity of the person voting sometimes, too, or are they paying attention, or are they watching TV, and then it comes time to vote and they just flip on? So that's the reason why. If we wanted to go into detail on that, I'd prefer to delete that entire section otherwise.
Councilman Wadiola?
And this is, when I was reading the first page, they, we have to declare disaster or emergency, right? So kind of what you're saying, no?
Not for this section. This section is to, say the, say the disaster lets up and somebody's, somebody's lingering, though. Somebody has an issue, or some family member has an issue, or they have to start traveling, and you still want to let somebody participate and hear their voice. We continue a lot of matters because we don't have input from people. So this is to be generally applicable in the future.
Then I would, I wouldn't agree with it. Yeah, I think we have to be present.
Okay.
I mean, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that. Yeah.
Clarified.
Any other comments regarding section three? Thing done, moving on to section four?
Should, is the consensus that I delete it based on those comments and a lack of objection? Okay.
Section three is getting deleted?
Yes, seems that way, unless there's.
Because of the remote, they should be here, because it, this is not for just emergency or when they declare disasters.
Correct.
This is in general.
Sounds like a bigger policy discussion that council.
Yeah, and I think we could revise it, because I know there's times where people were on phones or calling in, and some didn't get it. We could, this is something we could talk about later, but not in the emergency one.
Excellent. Any objection to it being deleted? Section four?
Section four is a provision that is a really thing we don't want to have to do. It's been recognized by the Colorado Court of Appeals as a situation that can occur, where there's such an emergency action that needs to be taken, that the council needs to meet immediately with limited or no public notice, and, or potentially then the public not in attendance, such that council could meet and approve something. If there's an emergency, it then is only valid if it is ratified at the next council meeting. So it gets considered again, essentially. This is something that is in a number of city codes around the state. I recommend having it, because we don't know what the next two weeks or two months looks like. And I think it would be a hard standard to get here, but I don't want to be left without the option.
Any comment on section four? Moving on?
That is, that is it. This would be introduced as an emergency ordinance. Happy to answer any questions. I really appreciate your thoughtful consideration on a rush basis.
You have one question before I open this up for any other. Would this also apply to the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority?
The Urban Renewal Authority would have to choose that. I would be happy to put. I would be happy to put, given the dependency of actions, if they chose to do it, boards and commissions in that section where other committees can rely on it. I would say boards and commissions and the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority, if that would make sense, just in case.
So following back to previous, we mentioned extending deadlines. What about that deadline that you and I talked about earlier, sir?
At this point, it's still unknown whether that deadline needs to be extended, but whether or not the closing deadline is extended, there will be actions that the board will need to take in anticipation of closing. So we will need a meeting sometime before March 30.
So earlier this evening, I had a conversation about how we were on the closing of the Dog Track project, and asked if, given the fact that a lot of our functions are slimming down, whether or not we would be able to meet those timelines. Given the fact that we would need a meeting prior to that, what is the proposed methodology for having a URA meeting, whether the deadline is extended or not extended? I believe in order to extend that deadline, it would require a meeting. In order to meet the deadline, it would require a meeting. So again, I go back to how does this affect the URA? What is our plan going forward?
Three days ago, we were working, I was working on that significantly. I have not worked on that in about three days, to be honest. So frankly, we are adjusting and looking at that. There are potential delay provisions in the contract that need to be evaluated. I know our outside counsel and the buyer's attorneys are still working on that. And so as I understand it, things are still proceeding, and there's a potential that it could be met. The deadline in the purchase and sale agreement for that contract is a deadline after which the Urban Renewal Authority would have to send a notice of default to place the buyer in default, so it is not necessarily a drop dead date, but it is a point at which the contract could be breached. So as usual, the long way of saying, we are looking at it and expect to know more by early next week.
Okay. So...
However, I think by adding the language the mayor has suggested, would enable us to call a special meeting, an electronic meeting of the Urban Renewal Authority, if it's necessary.
I've also added the general improvement districts, just in case.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding this ordinance? Councilwoman Noble?
That reminds me, we were supposed to be having a Metro District Forum, or Town Hall, on April 7th. Is that correct? That's last I remember. In Mr. Smith's presentation.
So we've not canceled anything. Actually, we've not canceled anything yet. So given the council's action tonight, we would be canceling city council meetings, board and commission meetings, just through the end of the month.
Okay.
Long answer, Metro District Forum is still on at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any other conversation regarding this ordinance that has been prepared for us? Would like to point out this is an emergency ordinance?
Yes, and so...
Requiring...
Seven votes.
Seven votes.
It would need to be a motion to introduce and approve Ordinance 2271 as an emergency ordinance.
I'm looking for a motion to introduce and approve. Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Motion to introduce and approve Ordinance 2271.
Does that need to state as an emergency ordinance?
Oh.
It'll be read in the title.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hurst?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 2271. Is there any discussion? Will the city attorney please read the title?
It is Ordinance 2271, an emergency ordinance of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, establishing electronic and emergency meeting procedures and authorizing the remote conduct of meetings for the City of Commerce City during declared certain, during, correct the typo, declaring certain, declared disasters and emergencies. Just for the record, I want to note there are copies of the ordinance present in the back of the room for the public.
We will take a roll call vote. For the record, the emergency ordinance, number 2271, passes unanimously. Next is the disaster declaration. Will City Manager McBroom and City Attorney Sheasley please explain the disaster declaration and the need for council action?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll lead off and then hand off to Mr. Sheasley. One of the many things we did yesterday was draft and execute a disaster declaration. It was done for a few reasons. First and foremost, it puts us in alignment with Adams County and state law, or the state of Colorado that made similar declarations yesterday. The key reason for us is to make us eligible for aid. It sends a clear message to the federal government and state government that we may be seeking aid. It's made changes to how we collect and record information here, so that we're eligible for reimbursement. So aid is a key reason why we did it. And the third reason was to highlight for the community the seriousness of the issue and telegraph a change in city operations. So those were the key reasons that we did it. It's provided for in state law. And what else should we say about it?
That is it. The reason for council action tonight, state law provides that a local disaster declaration cannot be continued or renewed for a period beyond seven days unless the local governing body consents to that. So in your script tonight is a motion to authorize the extension and the renewal of that by the city manager through the extent of the governor's declaration.
Our original understanding of the law is that the city council will have to meet every seven days and extend the declaration. We now believe you can take an action tonight that'll extend it past the initial seven days to run concurrent with the state's declaration.
Any discussion on this item? Anybody wishing to make a motion on this item? Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
A motion to consent to the renewal or continuation of the disaster declaration related to COVID-19 for a period longer than seven days, but not beyond the expiration of the governor's executive order declaring a disaster as it may be extended.
Councilmember Dare? I have a motion and a second to extend the disaster declaration up to the governor's executive order. Any discussion on that item? We will take a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. For the record, motion passes unanimously. Yes, sir?
Mayor, a quick note about the executive session. We left that on the agenda. It is somewhat time-sensitive, but the more we've thought about it, it's not critical that you take up the matter tonight. If you decide to take it up, we don't think it'll take very long, and we would be able to do it in this room, but it's council's decision.
Anybody wishing to weigh in? Councilwoman Grimes?
I think since we're already here and it's a fairly brief topic, I think we just go ahead and do it.
Councilmember Dare? Making your motion? I have a motion to enter into executive session. Is there a second? Councilman Hurst?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. We'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Sounds like we have enough votes. We will do the executive session and adjourn immediately following the executive session, according to our script.
We will turn the feed off and turn the table. So give us a quick moment.
Jody tells me we are live once again.
All right. We are out of our executive session after discussing potential negotiations for the sale or of potential property. Anybody have a motion to make on that? Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, I motion not to go with buying the five acres in villages east as it for $644,000.
Councilwoman Grimes?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the item?
Hold on.
Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, I just think we wanted to be clear with the residents of why we're not purchasing this five acre park or land. It was going to be an elementary school and there was a timeline on it. The school district does not want to build elementary there because it's not large enough for an elementary school. So per the contract, I believe it goes back to the land developer.
Very good. This is a follow-up to a meeting that we had, a study session meeting we had back in September whenever we were notified that there's a potential for land in the villages of Buffalo Run East to revert back to the developer because he has met the requirement, excuse me, the developer has met the requirement to build a certain percentage of homes within the P O D agreement and a school or park had not been built on that site. At that time during the study session, council directed staff to explore purchasing that piece of property to prevent it from reverting back to. During the study session, we had a presentation that has caused us to come out of that executive session and take up this matter for a vote. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Noble?
I want, could you please clarify where this property is located?
The property is in villages of Buffalo Run East and the park that was built on the nine acre west part of the property adjoins Chambers Road and the property that would be for a school site is the five acres to the east of the park. And so total acreage there is 14 acres and as noted before, the five acres was judged to not be large enough for a traditional elementary school.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for anyone so that they would know this doesn't affect the existing park.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table to not pursue purchase of this property. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We will not pursue purchase. Councilman Wadiola, you have an administrative council item you would like to discuss?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up an issue that happened over the weekend while we were in DC. We had a councilperson printing my name, printing my room number and sent a $107 bar tab to my room without my knowledge. I want to bring it to light because this is very inappropriate and I'd like the consent of council to talk about this incident.
I don't believe you need the consent of council to talk about it. Please proceed.
You actually do.
Oh, do we?
Yeah, it's a special meeting. It wasn't on the agenda, so.
All those in favor of allowing Councilman Wadiola to talk about this, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please proceed.
Thank you and I appreciate it. The 107 was noticed when I checked out of the hotel. I had an incidental cost and it happened at 12:38 a.m. Monday morning with four guests at the lobby at the bar. I said this was not mine. They're like, no, it is. Here's your signature. Here's your name. Here's your room number. At the bar, I said this was not mine. They're like, no, it is. Here's your signature. Here's your name. Here's your room number. I was running, going to get my flight. I said I'll call the manager. I text our colleagues who were there still and a couple of them responded and Mayor Hughesman responded and said that it was an accident and I appreciate that. He did get it changed to his card. But my issue with it is someone intentionally wrote my last name and my room number. He did scribble a signature. I talked to the manager and the director at the Marriott and they said that they don't know what number or person it is until they write and give it back. To me, this is inappropriate. I don't know, someone else wrote it. We're out there on business and we're doing this stuff. A, it's not cool. It was on my credit card. B, no one knows our financial situations. C, it took myself to find out. I saw our colleagues Monday and Tuesday. Nothing, right? So I just want to have a discussion. You know, we spend years building trust in any relationship. And it's nine of us and an incident like this breaks that like that. Whether it was intended to be a joke, which is not a funny joke, or a mistake, or I don't know. So I just wanted to bring it out because we were on official business out there. I do, our public should know that this is inappropriate and would want to hear from my council colleagues to see if anybody, there's four people. If any of you guys want to see the receipt from the same pen, I have it. I just want, that way we could establish and go on and move the city forward because I think it's very inappropriate.
Councilwoman Madera? Thank you, Councilwoman Madera. Councilwoman Grimes?
Again, would just echo Councilwoman Madera and also say that learning this is a, that's a huge concern and it certainly reaches trust amongst council and, you know, would like to seek some kind of resolution to this because how do we act as a, as a team, as a council if we can't trust each other and yeah, that's just, it's hugely concerning for me that that happened, especially on city business and yeah, it really bothers me that, that, you know, if you're on business representing the city, something like that would happen.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Smith?
I just want to apologize to you. I'm not sure how that happened. I knew what floor you were on, but I don't think any of us really knew what room you were in, so honestly, I'm not sure how it happened, but I'm really sorry that it did.
So as I have explained to Councilman Wadiola, you and I have talked about it, it was not intentional. At the time, whenever we were closing out our tab, I did not know my room number and handed my phone to who I thought was the bartender and said here my room and phone and, phone, excuse me, my room and name are on there. I had scribbled my signature and then moved on, did not at the time know that it was actually being charged to your room. Soon as you brought that to my attention, I immediately took care of it, made sure the charge was taken off your room and put on the proper account. So I do apologize that happened. I apologize it was not intentional. Again, at that time, I had handed my phone with my room number. The way that the reservations were made for us, I had your reservation, my reservation and Mayor Pro Tem Frank's reservation on there. The wrong reservation was chosen whenever that was handed off. So I do apologize to you again. I apologize profusely. Was not intentional, was not done with malice, was not done as a joke and was a mistake that was made and has been rectified.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I'll be calling the Marriott because someone's going to get fired then. That's what they would say. Because they said their, their employees will never write someone's name. That it came from that table. So I will call that district director and said they didn't write it because that's what they're instructed.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, I'm trying to get clarification though as to the signature though is who signed, who, did the hotel actually say someone at this hotel signed? I understand the charges were billed to your room, but they notify or investigate who signed your name and was it actually your name or someone else's name?
So I could pass it around if you guys want it. They put my, the amount, the room number, Wadiola, spelled it correctly, and then scribbled the signature. And when I talked to them, they said they don't do that. It comes from the table. And I think it's who did it? Because I'll be honest with you, Mayor, I appreciate it and like just like when I text you, but I'm going to call them tomorrow and say, nope, no one said they signed it. It must have been your employee and someone's going to get terminated. That's what, that's what happens. So it's just unfortunate.
And I do think, like you said, back to building trusts amongst each other, I do think once you contact the hotel councilman Guardiola, depending what they tell you, it'd be nice if you kept council and the community informed as to what happened and if they can verify it wasn't one of their employees, then I think it should be investigated further amongst city council.
Well, and that's one of the options I think we could have, have a special council investigate this incident. If council desires.
Yes, and I, I would agree with that because to keep an open honesty and communication amongst ourselves and the and our constituents, maybe that is the best option to proceed.
Councilwoman Grimes?
If, if a special investigation is an option, I think that's something that we should pursue.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
I would agree with that and I do apologize, Jose. We had one outlier in that group that was not, it was Robin, excuse me, Councilwoman Smith, Mayor Hughesman and myself, and then one outlier that we did not know. And it's not somebody that we knew from council and so I'm not, I'm not at all putting any blame on that individual, but that was the only outlier that we had and it's someone that I did not know. I mean, none of us knew. We just met that night, so again, I just apologize that it went on your card at all.
Councilwoman Smith?
Just going back to what Mayor Pro Tem said, we did have the DJ that we met that night that was there and Mayor said he gave his phone to somebody he thought worked there, so it might have been him. It wasn't us and I said, I'm sorry that it happened. It's awful. It's really awful.
Cool, and I, I appreciate that. I think I'd like to see what a special council could come up with. My issue with that, to be honest with you, is what we're going through right now. You know, what, all the stuff we're doing and this is just to me, I thought about this a lot. Is it petty? But it's not, right? It's wrong. At the end of the day, it's wrong. It's not cool. And so I would ask Mr. Sheasley if it could be maybe a low priority, I don't know. To see, because I would, I mean, to me, I mean, you look at it, you guys could come check it out. Whoever wrote the signature, I think, looks the same. But I wouldn't want to say that I'm not a forensic or scientist on that stuff. So what would our options be then?
Obtaining a third party to conduct some sort of investigation probably would be the best. I don't think you'd want the city to do it. I think low priority makes sense, inexpensive probably makes sense. You may want to put a cap on the amount that could be spent. Struggling is I don't know, I don't know what resource I could use at this point to do that, so if there's direction from council to identify a special counsel or investigator to bring back a proposal for council to consider at their next meeting, it wouldn't give you an answer in the next month. Would that be okay? If there's direction for council to me go out and find that during my downtime over the next few weeks?
That'll be fine with me.
So if, if there's a motion to that effect, I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, I would request that we make a motion to hire an outside, a third-party possible investigation company to look into this matter further regarding Jose, Councilman Jose Guardiola.
Councilwoman Grimes?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second to allow the city attorney to hire an outside investigator. Any conversation on that? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Once again, I do want to convey my sincere apology that that took place. As I said, it was not intentional. Was not supposed to be a joke, wasn't, did not know that that had taken place until you sent me the text message.
And I appreciate you letting us bring it.
Yes, sir?
I will take that marching order and go back. I'll report it to the council as opposed to what comes up, but I'll have some conversations with Mr. Wadiola if that's okay.
Any other items up for discussion? Seeing none, this special meeting of the city council of the city of Commerce City is adjourned.